Mr. Norrington, would you help us with prayer?
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Eternal Father, Thou who knows our heart, Thou who knows the stars by name and the hairs on our heads by number, be with us in every decision that we make tonight, for you know our heart and our intent. For this is our prayer, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, thank you, Mayor. You got your department reports, if you have questions now to ask. You all okay with them? No questions?
Department reports, just one, I just wanted to say one thing to the rest of the department. This guy's been doing a good job out there and I appreciate everything he can do because we've gotten a lot of the light in the city. It's being removed and code enforcement has been doing a real good job. I think they did like about four dilapidated buildings in my district.
They what?
They did about four buildings alone in my district. I know that they have been torn down.
Okay. That's good. Public comments. Leonard Johnson, would you like to come up to the podium?
How y'all doing today?
Good afternoon.
You got three minutes, Mr. Johnson? Sorry? I said you've got three minutes.
Okay. What I'm here today for, over on Beverly Loop, it looks sort of like a golf course, all the hot roads and everything over there. And I've called up here a few times about getting it fixed, no response. I'd like to get the street fixed. There's no Golden Road, quite a few more streets over there I think. We got the taxpayers paying taxes and everything, it'd be nice if we...
Oh, Golden?
Golden and Beverly Loop.
Okay. We'll take it with you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Golden, Beverly, and shady lanes, I'm scheduled on that.
Just an ass.
Okay.
So y'all scared of being...
Is Golden yet on that, you said?
Yeah.
Are the drivers included on that?
Oh.
They did give the parameters, goes from which end, from where on Beverly Loop around to...
Beverly Loop, we done both ends.
Mm-hmm.
Around the drive and shady lanes, all next same project.
Yeah. That might just be out, y'all was cool. It's gonna be like regular asphalt, not the rock?
It's gonna be complete rebuild.
Okay.
And actually new cover, so for across the road there by your house, then on Beverly Loop, getting the covers done. The ditch at the bottom of this house there, flood zone stuff, it's supposed to be reboxed down.
It is. It's got, it's got a place down there at that ditch, if you go, I told, I showed them a fast word, they, it's got like an opening in between the covers. Soon a later part will come through there, like garbage truck or whatever, it just won't go right down in there.
They're gonna fix all that up.
Is that part of that eleven million dollar rebuild?
Yes.
I did turn the pictures in to the street department, I went out there, you talked to me, I just missed you.
Okay. Yes, I was wondering, because I was wondering if it was yours today.
It's mine. I went out there many flights and took pictures of it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Martinez?
Three minutes, sir. All right, thank you, Mayor. For all you that, that you don't know me, my name is Steve Martinez. I own and operate ACO. We are, we operate as a developer builder and invest heavily in the Jasper surrounding communities. I myself always been a champion of growth and change for Jasper. However, recently, as I wind down my time on the school board and get a little bit more involved with the city, it's been a little bit disheartening seeing some of the, seeing some of the folks that are supposed to be here for growth against certain things when it's not their own idea. As a leader of our undeserved communities, I've watched time and time against, time and time again, businesses approach JECO for assistance only to be turned away. We know, we sent them. JECO's statement, their misstatement is to promote, encourage, and enhance the creation of jobs and expansion of the local tax base. Specifically, JECO states they are a 4A economic development corporation with 4B limited capabilities. Yet, what limited capabilities are these? There's no specification or where to look at. Do they only apply to certain businesses or individuals that are associated with board members? JECO has not been fair, ethical, and equitable in providing assistance to local business and there's data to show it. I believe the only way to move forward is to replace or have the current director and his assistant step down. Moving on, I have met with city managers and public works directors over the last two years on developing subdivision within, that falls within the city's maintenance and sewer. This is actual tangible growth within the city for Jasper. After those meetings, ACO and our engineers changed the plans to meet the city of Jasper request. I was informed at that time from our engineer after that meeting that Jasper was not interested in providing maintenance for the maintenance and sewer of that subdivision. This, after there being zero investment for the, from the city for installing the sewer and water infrastructure, ACO would foot the bill on every part of it. You all have received an email from me in the hopes of show transparency? No one's reached out to me except for one person on this floor. Would this be the same treatment other developers and business owners would receive, or is this something else to it? As a United States Marine, one thing stuck with me and one characteristic has taken my family and my business this far: integrity. I ask all of you to do the same searching in the mirror and really ask if you're in this for the right reasons. All I've ever wanted as a Marine was to come home after two tours to Iraq, live a peaceful life, and provide an honest living for my family. All that's been shattered. I don't know if you were trying to get my attention, but now you have it and I'll continue to be a voice for those in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. All right. Out of one is consider approval of one set of minutes of the regular city council meeting on February thirteenth. Do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion, sir.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, is there any more discussion?
None.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right. Number two is the city's audit report for fiscal year September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Greg Peterson. I'm an audit partner for Weaver and tonight I'll be going over the results of our audit for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. You may all have a printed copy in front of you, we'll be flipping through some pages of Mark just to fill over some of the highlights and the results of our audit. So the purpose of an audit is for an auditor to render an opinion on the financial statements, to provide some reliability on the information that's being presented. So if we can, if we can turn to page eighty-four. If any good book, we're gonna go right to the back for all the good subjects. All right, well, page eighty-four, that's what you'll see, this is our schedule of findings and question costs. And here is basically where we summarize the results of our audit. So, section one, summary of auditor's report. So we issue several opinions when we render these financial statements. The first opinion that we render is on the financial statements themselves. You are gonna receive an unmodified opinion, so that is the highest level of assurance that you can receive in an audit. As part of our audit, we look at more than just the numbers on the financial statements, we look at the city's internal controls. During that process, if we find any weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, they'd be listed here. We did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the city's internal controls. Part of that process is we look at the significant transaction classes of the city. So we're looking at primarily payroll and cash disbursement processes. Throughout our testing, we did not identify any, any matters that came to, to our testing that we deemed significant or material weakness. The second opinion that we render, and this is somewhat new for the city, is we render an opinion on federal awards. So this is the first year that the city's received or expended enough federal awards to warrant a single audit. So part of our single audit procedures is we test the expenditures of your federal programs. Again, as part of that, we not only test compliance on how that money's being spent, but we also look at internal controls over those federal programs. So again, we are gonna render an unmodified opinion on the expenditures of those federal awards. As part of that process, we did not identify any weaknesses in internal controls as part of that testing.
I have a question, does that also allow for us to be able to, does that increase our ability to get more awards?
No, what it basically just tells those awarded agencies is that we went in and we tested compliance on how that money was spent and that we didn't have any findings on how that money was spent, that it was, could use words intended purpose. So the two programs that we tested are actually listed here. So it's the CDBG block grant and the coronavirus state and fiscal recovery grants. So that was about two point one million of expenditures out of about two point five. So we got about eighty percent coverage of your total federal expenditures by testing those two programs. And as you, as you look down at the results, you may see, on question number nine, talking about, does the audit qualify as a low risk audit and it says no.
I have one question, you said two point one, is this the same, it says twenty-one point oh six?
So, so that is the, that's the program listing number. The actual expenditures of federal awards is on page, we actually list out the schedule, it's on page eighty-six. So page eighty-six actually lists all your federal programs and your expenditures. You can see there is two point five and those two programs are about two point one of that two point five. But number nine talks about, did you qualify as a low risk audit? That's a no. And that's simply because in order to qualify as a high risk audit, you have to have two consecutive years of federal program expenditures over seven fifty. This is the first time y'all exceeded that in many years, so that's why you don't qualify as a low risk audit. Basically, what it says, we have to get forty percent coverage, those programs already had eighty percent coverage. So we, we got the coverage requirement just from those two programs. So just looking at this single page, you really couldn't ask for better results. Unmodified opinions, no findings on internal controls, really audit doesn't go much better than that. But we'll, we'll talk about some of the actual numbers now. I'm gonna have you to turn to the front, page twenty-two. So tonight's discussion, I'm just gonna focus on the general fund and the utility fund. Those are the two primary funds of the city. So with the general fund, we're looking at total assets of seven point five million dollars. About five point seven of that is comprised of cash and CDs. So you have a very, very liquid general fund, fund balance. Moving down, you have total liabilities of one point three million dollars. So you have adequate cash to cover any liabilities that are currently due. Again, this is as of September thirtieth, so this is a point in time statement. Those numbers will have changed from then to now, but as of this audit report, general fund was very liquid. The next section we'd like to look at is fund balance. So the zero fund had total fund balance of six million dollars. Four point nine of that is, is unassigned. So basically, it's not restricted or encumbered in any way, it's available for next year's operations. We like to do a little ratio where we look at, you know, what amount of unassigned fund balance is available for next year's budget. So you have about seven months of unassigned fund balance that can be used towards next year's budget. We'll turn over to page twenty-four. So that was the balance sheet side of your general fund, now we're gonna look at the income statement side of your general fund. You had total revenues of seven point seven million dollars, that's up about nine hundred thousand from last year. Three hundred and sixty of that is related to sales tax and then you had three hundred thousand increase in the current funds. So some of that grant money went into your general fund, the rest of it went over to your utility fund. So that accounts for the nine hundred thousand dollar increase in revenues of your general fund. You had total expenditures of eleven point four million dollars. That's actually a three million dollar increase over prior year. Now, what makes up that, that increase is in the line that you see for capital outlay. So during the current year, you had about three and a half million dollars more capital outlay than prior year. So that always just goes towards, you know, heavy equipment, machinery, capital projects, things of that nature get expended in that category. Moving down to your other financing sources and usage column, you have total financing sources of two point seven million dollars. The biggest portion of that is transferred in from the utility fund of two point seven. So when we net your revenues, your expenses, and your other financing sources, we had a decrease in general fund, fund balance of about nine hundred thousand dollars. Still leaving you with very, very healthy fund balance in your general fund of six million dollars. Next, we'll turn over to page twenty-six. This fund is your utility fund, so we will look at the balance sheet. You have total current assets of forty-seven point three million dollars. About ninety-three point eight percent of that is sitting in cash, cash equivalents, whether that cash be restricted or available. And so again, very highly liquid total, total assets. Moving down to your non-current assets, you had thirty-five point three million dollars. So your non-current assets, so this is gonna be your land, your buildings, your equipment. And that actually increased by seventeen point one million dollars over prior year. And approximately fifteen point seven of that was the donation of the two substations that you received from the SRMBA. So that's the reason you see such a big increase in your non-capital or non-current assets. Moving down to your liabilities, you had two point eight million in current liabilities. Again, just to point out that you have adequate cash to cover your current liabilities. And, excuse me, the utility fund ended with a net position of seventy-seven point four million dollars. We'll just look over the next page, page twenty-seven. So this is the income statement side of your utility fund. You were able to generate twenty-two point five million dollars in revenues. It's actually down about one point one million dollars from, from last year. The biggest culprit of that is your electrical services, usage just went down. That was the main driver of that decrease in revenues.
Usage went down?
Yes, sir, yes. And then operating expense, you'll see a very similar change. Your operating expenses were fifteen point three million dollars, they decreased about one point two million dollars. The power production was the offset there. So decrease in revenues, decrease in expense, all related to electrical services. Looking at your non-operating revenues, you had a total intergovernmental revenues of one point six million dollars. That's heavily comprised of those two federal grants that we were just discussing. So the, you got some disaster funding through T-Dome and then you got some COVID money. And that's where that's gonna be recorded right there, that one point six. Moving down, you'll see the capital contributions of fifteen point seven million dollars. Again, that's what I just discussed with the substations. So your capital assets increased by fifteen point seven million and then you have to record a offsetting revenue for that capital contribution of fifteen point seven. So at the end of the day, your utility fund, fund balance or change in net position increased by twenty million dollars.
Well, you said, excuse me, upon the operating revenues, electrical services, is that, you said there was a decrease in that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, in that line item, electrical services?
Yeah.
It's about a one point one million dollar decrease.
In usage?
Yeah, that's related to...
To usage, total?
Not kilowatt.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, but a total for the city.
Um, yes, I mean, I think, I think total revenues may have gone down one point two, but the electrical was about one point one of that, total one point two decrease.
Okay, thank you.
And then very, very similar to operating expenses, it decreased in total by about one point three. Power purchases were about one point two. Other than that, it's very comparable to prior year.
Okay. So it didn't much of a change?
Yeah, not really.
Okay.
When you netted down, there was hardly any change.
Thank you.
So that's kind of the, the two key points on the funds that I wanted to discuss tonight. Next, we'll turn over to page forty. And forty is in the footnote disclosure, so the footnote disclosure section of this audit report just provides a little bit more detail to the numbers that you see in those statements. But as you get to page forty, we'll be looking at these tables of capital assets. So these are those non-current assets I was talking about. So this is gonna be your, your land, your construction in progress, your buildings, your equipment. So you can just see that categorized here by type and the net accumulated depreciation against that. So, so you'll see that for the governmental activities and the business type activities. So governmental activities, basically your general fund, and the business type activities is your utility fund. I just wanted to point out on the, on the BTA side, utility fund, you see that sixteen point one million dollar increase in the utility systems, which accounts for those substations.
As, as an asset?
As an asset, yes, sir. And that, that asset will get, that's why we see it as a, as an increase in your capital asset and revenue. And then over the years, you'll depreciate that down. So you will expense that through accumulated depreciation over the life of that asset. And then we'll turn to page forty-three. Again, you'll see on page forty-three, this is the change in your long-term liabilities. The city's actually in a very unique position not to have really any bonded long-term debt that was extinguished during the current period. So really, the only thing that's remaining as outstanding would be some finance purchases for equipment, your compensated absences, so basically employees leave vacation. You actually have a net pension asset this year, which is pretty interesting, which just goes to show that the city's very well-funded for their pension retirement plan. You have an OPEC plan, two OPEC plans for retiree health benefits. Again, that's just an actuarially determined liability, the total's about one point eight million dollars. There's not a current portion of that that's due, it's not a call on cash in any way, it's just an actuarially determined liability for those retirees' health benefits.
So it says beginning balance is one point eight million and ending balance is one point five.
Yes, sir, yeah. So what causes the changes primarily in your pension and your OPEC calculations? Are all those actuarial assumptions? So they do like a mortality calculation, they look at the age of your current employees to calculate what, what that long-term liability is gonna be of the city. Just so happened that for the pension side of it, it turned into an asset and then for the long-term health side of it, it was a liability.
So it figures that into it?
Yes, yes. And these calculations are very sensitive to those changes, which are disclosed in the footnotes, but if they change their discount rate about one percent, it can move those assets and liabilities by upwards of a million dollars compared to the other. So like I said, the biggest portion of the pension, the reason it turned into an asset is because these things are measured a year behind and the investments held by that pension plan did really well. Now, I don't know, that's probably not gonna be true for the next time this calculation gets done, so maybe look back to...
It looks good.
It looks good right now. Yeah. So that's really kind of all the, the high points I wanted to, to go over tonight and happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Denise, thank you for everything that you do, all the hard work. It takes a lot of requests and information to, to pull all this together, so.
Great staff, thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion.
I'll take it, I'll take it.
You got a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
You have a second? I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Number three, consider approval for proclamation declaring April as Fair Housing Month for grant requirements for Fair Housing activities.
I move it.
So move. Got a motion, do we have a second? And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Number four, consider for approval, resolution number three zero zero two, adopting silver rice plans and policies for Jasper CDV twenty-one dash oh two eight one, Community Block, Community Development Block Grant Sewer Improvement Project.
So what it works on? So, like...
Which one is that?
Yeah, that's the Wallop, that's the...
The one in the middle?
That's the three hundred fifty thousand.
Now, this is the Wallop.
Yeah, that's the lease stations.
Do I have a motion?
I made a motion.
How many?
Like my...
Yeah, I have a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Number five, consider for approval, resolution number three zero zero three, authorizing sitin' tours for Jasper's CDV twenty-one dash oh two eight one, CDVG grant sewer improvement project.
So move.
We got a motion, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Susan, would you like to present?
I would love to, more than anything else, I love sections three. It's only gonna take like thirty-five minutes, is that okay?
Oh, man.
Y'all came on a good night.
That's where everybody came, so it's a good...
Just to see me, they heard I was gonna be here. Mayor and council, this is a requirement of the, both the CDVG and the General Land Office grants that we do. Section three is a, a federal act that's been in place since nineteen sixty-eight. We take care of these activities on each of the grants that we administer for you. But one of the requirements is that we actually formally present to council and anyone in attendance what that means and why we do it. So at a very fifty thousand foot, here goes with section three. The purpose of it is that the HUD, the, the funding agency that we get most of our grant funds from, is encouraging grant recipients to push as much of that money toward low to moderate income persons as possible. So what they want us to do is make the opportunities available to low-income businesses and low-income persons when at all possible. So those are defined as section three. There are section three businesses and there are section three individuals. And in this particular, in these particular grants, the, the contract opportunities that we look at are grant administration, engineering, and construction. So what do we do? We, when we bid a project with the city, we post the opportunity on HUD's section three portal to make sure that any section three businesses are aware of these opportunities and can bid on them. And we also email that out to certain organizations who then push that information out to section three businesses. Then once we hire a contractor for the project and we have what's called a pre-construction conference, we explain to that contractor that if they need to hire any new employees, we encourage them to hire section three persons. And section three persons are defined as someone within the project area who is also of low to moderate income. And the income limits are, are again, they're, they're published by HUD and they're based on average income within each county. So every county in the state of Texas has their own income limits and we base those on that. And then since we manage all of the reporting for all labor compliance, which ensures that every person that works on one of these jobs is paid fair federal wages, we collect every hour of every person that works on the job and then we define each person as whether or not they're section three and we report all that information back to the state. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but that is section three, what we do and why we do that for you as part of your grant funds.
So on this map that's on here, is this the area that's defined by this map? Is this the area of section three?
Yes, sir. There, there, the map, we start with the, the actual project location and we do a one-mile radius. And one-mile radius in that, those would be considered targeted section three persons. And then the regular definition of section three is anybody in the city limits because those are our beneficiaries. And then from there, we, we move outwards to, to get those people.
And you said, notice that you said that you have ways to get that out to the people?
We do, there's a, the... There's a, the new HUD portal for section three business opportunities, and we, when, when the con, when the engineer publishes a bidding opportunity on what's called CivCast or some other type of, uh, clearinghouse for grant, a bid opportu, a bidding opportunities, I should say, we also put that on the HUD portal.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We'll have a way to get that out to people, so we can let people know that.
Yes, sir, we do. And we also have an email list that we use of, of known section three contractors in the area, that we try to do that. And, and when we're monitored, we have to prove that we uploaded to that location, we have to prove that we put that information out to those section three businesses. And, you know, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Fortunately for us, these are goals and not requirements. So, uh, we, we try our best to, you know, to, uh, give these opportunities to section three persons and section three businesses. If they're there, that's great, and it's not, you know, we've attempted to do so.
Thank you, Susan.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I wanted to add real quick, and on your audit question, I am required, anytime I do an application for you, to give the current, most current audit and most current, uh, single audit. And if you don't have a current one, you're not grant-eligible. So, to, to address your question about that, yes, sir.
Thanks.
I need a motion to consider...
I'll move.
So, move.
All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Number seven, consider for approval, well, you want to take this one, Deborah? I mean, Denise?
Can we make sure that you're Denise and not Deborah?
I'm hungry. The mayor and council, this is on our media relations position, and we have gone back and we met after y'all met with the last council, and y'all chose these Texas strategic group. And then, we met with them to discuss the negotiations of what y'all had asked us to do. They came back, and we worked with them, and they came back with another proposal. Last week, when I sent this all out to you, I also sent an email to our city attorney, asking his opinion on what we had done and were we legal or whatever. Today, he gave me the opinion, and he goes like that, we need to go back out for a request for proposal to give all the other entities or any new ones an opportunity to bid on the condensed. From what we had originally requested, that we've scaled down quite a bit, um, to get the cost down. So, it's up to you as council to direct us how you want to proceed with this.
So, you're saying that you changed the scope of the RFP?
Not so much the scope, as far as we reduced it, as the...
The RFP?
Yeah, so what, so what happened? So, what happened was, um, after we selected, uh, Texas strategies, we, uh, voted on doing a thirty-day negotiation. In that thirty-day negotiation, uh, negotiated what we wanted them to do and the budget that we had to spend. So, Ms. Denise met with them, uh, I think like maybe two or three weeks afterwards, and they came to a conclusion, and this is the proposal they came back to.
So, um, so, uh, councilman Lewis, you said, you know, so we, we negotiated. Who, who sat down and negotiated with, to do the reduction with, uh, Texas strategy?
Miss Denise did.
Oh, so you, so you, okay.
I saw.
Yeah.
I guess, I asked everybody for their input. I think Mr. Lewis was the only one that gave me some input. I sat down with him, and Greg, uh, Kelly and I sat down with, um...
But since we reduced it for one, we need to have everybody...
Well, it, it wasn't, it, it wasn't a reduce for one, they had already won, they had already won the bid. So, the negotiation was, do what we require fits in the budget that we have set aside for them to be able to do the job that they...
So, they made recommendations on how to move forward?
Say again?
They made recommendations when they came back, so basically...
No, they...
Since there's recommendations, those minor changes made that reduce their overall, or maybe we need to push this back out?
No, no, what happened was, they had already won the bid, right? We had already...
Yeah, correct.
You're right.
And so, in the, in the negotiation, it came to, what did we want to spend for the work that we wanted? So, at that time, I asked Mr. Steve his opinion on things that we could ask him to do beside of that budget. So, uh, I gave notes to Ms. Denise. She sent an email of what I thought that, from what Mr. Steve sent me the email, I sent my opinion of what I thought that we can do, and I also submitted an amount I thought would be reasonable that we can spend. So, Ms. Denise met with them, they talked about what we required from them, from the city, and if they can do that job, and if they can do it within the budget that we have set aside, and this is what came out of that meeting.
Yeah, but I think Denise should also, you're being other...
Yeah, so, per recommendation from Mike, thanks for...
City attorney.
City attorney, uh, we just need to push this back out for, as a whole new RFP, or do we just need to get...
How, how new?
Okay, yeah.
So, so my question is, if you're going to put it out, why do we have to put it back out for RFP? We've already selected someone to do the task. The negotiation was figuring out the actual contract and how much we would spend to make the task possible. We've already selected someone to do the job.
Well, then...
As soon as it doesn't fall out of the negotiation.
No, sorry. Mike, can you explain?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, uh, first of all, you know, I should have been part of the negotiations, I should have been the nation. To be honest with you.
It was a public RFP that went out, they had won the bid on it.
No, he said, he's saying the negotiations, when the negotiations, you wanted to change.
But we didn't change anything, all we did was, the negotiation was, how much do you want to spend for them to do the task?
But you lo, you lowered it, what he's, from what I'm understanding, I could be wrong, but he's saying, you're lowering it. What you said, you asked him, what can we spend, they've already given us a bid.
No, 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 nobody is mo, no, hold on, what do you mean lowering it? I don't know, technically, what do you mean by lowering it?
According to this, it said you're lowering the amount, I mean, it's also, I mean...
No, well, listen, all right, so, so before you say anything, we selected the bid not by the amount that anyone made the bid on, we selected the actual group based off of the quality of work that they provide.
So, you're saying, yeah, what about the work from anybody else?
You didn't even stay for the whole, the whole workshop?
I just asked a question.
Yeah, 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 so, so, right, so the question is, we selected the group based off of the quality of work, not the price of that. Because everyone gave three prices. No one gave one bid, everyone gave what they could do in different brackets and different packages. So, we selected the group with the best quality. And the negotiation was for if, all right, if we going to choose a package, because everyone have a different package. If you choose a package, can we afford it? If not, will you be able to negotiate with us, eh, to whatever price that we can afford? That's a legitimate negotiation, right? So, that's what we did. So, go ahead, Ms. Rebecca.
I just, my, my opinion is...
Go ahead.
To be fair with everybody and any outside persons that looked at our original bid or proposal and submitted a bid on it, uh, if the person that received the, the, the...
Well, what I'm, I, I guess I know what you're trying to say, but the, the RFP was out for at least three or four months. It was a public, it was a public RFP that was out for at least three, for at least three months. So, everyone had an opportunity to bid on it for at least three months.
But now, it's changed.
How did it change?
Well, I think, uh...
Tell me, how did it change?
Well, according to this, it says amended proposal to provide...
Hold on, I'm, I'm talking to him. So, tell me how, so tell me how did it change?
Well, it, it's an amended proposal now.
How is it an amended proposal when we've already selected the present group wanting to bid?
I think if you, if you, if you co, allow somebody to come back with an amended proposal and say, this is where it's going to be...
We didn't, that's not, we didn't say this. They didn't come back and tell us, this is how it's going to be, and met with them, to ask them, can they read these requirements? And can they do it for the budget that we have available for them to do?
That's, that's my opinion. I wrote a letter, I gave one to each one of you, and, uh...
So, the, the award itself was intact, as far as you were concerned, on the RFP?
Uh, no, because, well, the award that the original award, award was, but if they come back and change that proposal and amend it...
I, I guess I'm...
So, like, we got a, we got another proposal coming up, and this got pretty different numbers on it.
No, this, David, can I say one thing?
So, I'm like, I understand what you're saying, if they amended the original RFP without, like, that was the negotiation.
I think, if they amended, then my opinion is, from the original proposal, that I declared that it would be void, and it would have to go back out for resubmission with a new proposal, and Denise, am I right?
Well, what I look at in this, uh, area, they're saying, you, you're saying RFP. What I, what I'm looking at is, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm looking at what the, uh, city attorney is saying, they amended their proposal.
No, 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 we submitted...
I just read what it says.
I hear what you're saying, no problem, no problem. We submitted the proposal, but we already awarded them the actual position and the job.
No, we did not submit a proposal, they did.
No, 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 no.
How many submitted?
No, 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 no. Last meeting, we awarded them the job with a thirty-day negotiation, because they had a three-package deal. The negotiation was to see if we could customize something that would fit the budget that we have to spend on the actual project. So, they had already won the bid last month. They was already approved. It was approved and voted on last month with an extension of a thirty-day negotiation, because there was not one actual monetary number that they came with to bid. Everyone came with at least two to three monetary amounts for what they could and what they could not do. So, they had already won the bid last month. In thirty days, we went and we met to see, okay, can we negotiate from what the amounts you gave? Can you fit in this actual perimeter of what we require, what we need, can you do it? Yes or no? Is that simple? So, no, so no one amended the RFP because they had already won the bid?
I did not see anything about amended RFP. It says amended proposed, that's what it said, but, I mean, that's...
Who, who said amended?
That's what it says in the, in the, in the agenda, it says amended proposal.
It says media or public relations Texas strategy new proposal.
Okay, so they submitted a new proposal?
The proposal is what the meeting came out of Denise and them, it's their meeting, right? Whatever happened in the meeting with Denise and them, this is why this is on the actual agenda today. Am I, am I right, Ms. Denise?
Well, this is, this is, in fact, this is a result of the meeting last, last month, when y'all still had the thirty-day negotiation.
And, and in that meeting, did you, you said, and you told them what you expected them to do based off the notes that any one of us had an opportunity to suggest?
Correct.
And you also, also told them that you had an amount that you could work with. If they could work with that amount, yes or no? If they could, then it wouldn't, it would, there's no point in going forward, correct?
I gave them a range.
Right, and they came back with what they could work with based off that range that you gave them.
Correct.
And under there been discussion, like, any, 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 uh, content comes from property of the city, that had to be negotiated out in detail. I remember y'all talking about some of those things, and they, and they were trying to find out for sure who would be some of the contacts, if they needed contact, who would be contacts, if y'all needed contacts, to make sure there was, uh, work built between the two parties. I wasn't privy to all of that, but I understand that's one of the things that y'all are going to work on. So, if you needed something you'd get in touch with, and vice versa. And, and property that went on there did not belong to them, belonged to the city, uh, there was no problem with ownership or who, who had control or... So, talk about, talk about, anything that goes on the website and any photographs taken, it's not all owned by the company. So, such as, if you guys take photos, it becomes property of KJAS.
That's a part of the negotiation. So, everything that they do, everything that they produce for the city, we own the rights to that. They can't do something and then use it for something else.
Yeah, they can't...
That's a part of the negotiation, right?
Still that imaging.
That's the, that's the business side of it.
Council, your recommendation is to rebid it?
Yes.
I rec, I, I, I move that we, um, go with what the, uh, city attorney recommends, and for us to rebid it.
We got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I oppose, no.
You're in the...
So, I'll make a motion to approve it.
You're going to carry that question on? There's two noes.
Two noes.
Two noes down here, two yeses, what do you vote?
I don't, I don't, I'm not really understanding the reason why. Why are we rebiding it? I don't, I don't know why we're rebiding it. From, from what I'm understanding, they, they won the, 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 the job, I'm saying they won the job, our quality of work, not the price, correct?
They won.
No, they actually were awarded by, by majority of them, people on council wanted them to bid it, okay?
It might be considered changing scope in the negotiation.
And you changed, and when you changed it, and you come in and say, well, we can do, and I understand what you're saying, and your, your idea, but it's like, no, you're saying, okay, well, you said you went into negotiations with them, and you say, okay, well, we can do it for this much. You resubmitted a different proposal, so that, that means that you, the same thing, you've already looked at all the other proposals that were there. You have not given the other, uh, entities that submitted a proposal a chance to do the same thing, even though you have awarded them.
Ms. Kelly, could you send this to Germer Getz and have him look at it?
Okay.
Do that, if that's okay with council?
It's found me, I, I move, I move, we postpone this?
You got a motion on it? And then, when you get a response from him, whether we can go forward, we'll go forward.
I'm partying with the budget opinion.
Yeah, can I say one thing there, before we...
Yes, sir.
And, and I was just talking to some colleague here, I, I, I say this, I, due to the... The legality, the legality of this issue, if we move forward with this, and we have other entities that either bid on that or want to bid on that, and I understand you saying, well, it was out there for three months, but they come in and they say, well, you have an amended proposal by somebody that you already chose, and they decide to sue the city, what do you think is going to happen?
Well, we said...
Because that's what it said.
Why do you think I told her, take it to Germer Getz? Their attorneys.
We have a motion on the floor. I amend my motion to postpone this.
That's fine. All right, okay, we have a postponement motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
No.
We're one against, and rest for, so we're postponing. All right. Oh, we've got more. Number eight, consider approval for proposals received on the women's civic club building renovations.
How much is that, man? How much is that?
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second.
I do.
Any discussion?
That's, that's in and out, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Jared Morgan and, um, Jack Armstrong, and quite a bit of time, this, this is something that we started looking at before COVID. We worked on it, and then we stopped because they stopped. I don't even think I does know, but it's something that we started back then. This is, if a bid for a hundred and three thousand from an outside source, and another forty-six thousand would be done by city employees, which is electricable, um, water, HVAC, and, um...
SAD?
SAD is all going to come out of contractor, it is, it is complete now. We are, as you all know, when you start opening a building, you do not know what you're going to get into, what's going to be there, but as best as we can tell, we, you know, they put a little bit in there above it, but we had to bring it all up to code, so just, we just want you to be aware, this is the best estimates that we can come up with right now.
We're going to be able to work around that beautiful glass in the windows.
That's one of the, that's one of the, uh, requests, the ones, have asked if we could work with the, uh, with the, uh, stained glass. Yes, we're going to try to do every bit of our power to maintain the integrity of the building and restore it to where it has a long life for this one.
Or a longer life.
Or longer, correct?
It's been a long one.
So, Mr. Philson and Mr. and, and Ryan is the ones that did.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Number nine, consider for...
You're welcome, ladies.
Consider for approval, list of election judges in court from May sixth.
I might move to approve that.
Seconding.
Got a motion and a second, all in, any discussion? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? And being said, that concludes this meeting, we're adjourned.
Thank you, mayor.